Good evening. It is Monday, November 19th, 2018. This meeting may be recorded live and being held at the Neil Shapiro Auditorium at Winthrop High School. Ms. Heems, you please call the roll.
Mr. Fabiano?
Yeah.
Mr. Matucci?
Yeah.
Ms. Powell?
Present.
Ms. Swol?
Here.
Mr. Vecchia?
Present.
Mr. Perrin?
Yeah.
Mr. Capabianco?
Present.
Ms. Powell, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
Here and none. We'll move right into delegates and visitors, and we have a year in review from CASA.
This is Ms. Amy Epstein, and Amy represents CASA. She'll fill you in a little bit on that, a little bit more detail about her role now with CASA. And she is going to give you some information. I think you have a PowerPoint in your packet that talks about the Youth Risk Assessment Survey, and I'm gonna let her take that lead, and I'm gonna get out of our way so she can use my seat.
If I may, I also just want to recognize Mary Loos, former chair of this committee, who's very active with CASA in the audience.
Board President.
Board President, and also the former chairman of this committee, and Steve Vergiero, who's a graduate of Winthrop Schools and very active in CASA and in the community.
Also on the board. Very important board members. Okay, so it looks like we're gonna do this kind of without the big screen, but I'm gonna try to be as descriptive as possible for the audience. And to let folks know, I did do this last week at the town council, so if you go on YouTube, you can find the video of me doing this with the presentation. The laptop is rebooting right now, obviously, but I am Amy Epstein. I've served as the Executive Director of CASA for the last three years, and now I have moved on to a new position, but I'm still behind the scenes just a couple hours a week at CASA to help out with the transition. Leanna Rosione is the new director. She is taking on more of a director role in less hours, so bear with CASA while they kind of sustain what they can with the funding they have. The community did a great job raising a lot of money for CASA, not enough to keep a full-time executive director, but lucky for you guys, we have Leanna, who's willing to do this part-time. Do you have another one? Because my laptop's being really slow, I'm sorry. Of course, it had to like do a whole...
I'm gonna give you a microphone.
It had to do an update, obviously, right now. That's how it works. Oh, wow. Thanks. Thanks. It's another one. Giant microphone.
Sorry.
Okay. No, I like it. All right, so if folks have a copy, they can take a look at it. This is the Winthrop Prevention Needs Assessment. What we do is we go into the school every two years, and we do what's called the Prevention Needs Assessment. It's very similar to the YRBS, which might be something you're familiar with, which is the Risk Behavior Survey. We use the Prevention Needs Assessment instead because it measures protective factors, which are kind of positive things that can bolster, you know, some of the positive stuff that helps combat some of the risk behaviors. So we really like to look at the strength-based parts of things as well. If you look at the first page, you can see that the number of, just the number of total surveys taken. This number looks very similar to the number of participants we had last year. So we have 1,039 students enrolled, and we had 733 students take the survey. It was interesting to see the numbers be the same as we switched from paper copies to electronic. So this year, the students could take the survey on their phone, on their Chromebook. We had students who were on a trip to Ireland that were still able to participate in the survey. So we found it to be a good use of our, a good method to switch to. The first section is about substance misuse. I like to start here because this is where we're funded to be. So we've been working for the past however many years, 20 years, on specifically substance misuse prevention. So you can see, the numbers really show that. Funding really does matter. We have a couple of core measures that we are funded to address specifically alcohol and marijuana, and you can see all of those numbers decrease. The first page is marijuana use. The left side is lifetime use, and the right side is current use. What we call current use is having used in the last 30 days. You can see in, on the left side, that use is going down consistently, and the same is true for current use. So that's a good sign, and often due to, you know, you put funding into something, you can make change. The next page, same thing. We're looking at alcohol, and we see lifetime versus current. We see it decreasing each year. And then the last page is binge drinking, which is something that we look a lot at in Winthrop because we know a lot of students participate in binge drinking. We define binge drinking as having more than five drinks in a row in the last, in one sitting, and these are students that reported binge drinking in the last two weeks. There is a very slight increase from last year, but we're staying pretty much at, it looks like 15%. It's hard to tell on this paper, sorry. The next section is mental health. We look a lot at mental health because we know that's a big issue for folks. We saw some alarming numbers in the first, in the surveys we took in the past, so we really wanted to keep an eye on that. The first page is some different measures of how folks feel emotionally. The first one is, in the past year, have you felt depressed or sad most days, even if you felt okay sometimes? So that's what we consider depression. We have pretty high rates of depression. We have almost 50%, or almost 40% of students identifying themselves as depressed. All in all, I'm inclined to think that I'm a failure. We have almost 30% of students answering yes to that question. At times, I think I'm no good at all. We have very close to, probably over 45%, and then sometimes I think that life is not worth it. We have 25%. So those are some numbers we keep an eye on because we know that that is showing us how our students are feeling. Students who considered suicide on the next page. You can see that is, again, a little bit on the rise this year. We have no funding to address this, again, so just, you know, funding matters, I guess. The next page is a little complex. If folks want this to be emailed to them, you can reach out to myself, Leanna, and we can definitely email you a copy so you can take a closer look. But you can see, this graph is a little bit more complex. We have, the blue is sad and hopeless for at least two weeks, green is suicide ideation, purple is made a plan, and red is a suicide attempt. So you can see over the years that other than making a plan, everything is on the rise. We see everything moving up. So some good news. The next page is a little bit of good news. We asked students if they have someone they could talk to, if they ever felt unsafe, abused, or needed help. We had almost 75% of middle schoolers saying yes, they did, and we had 80% of high schoolers saying yes to that question. That's a really important protective factor, so we want that number to be high. The next section is sexual health. You can see, we didn't get to ask this question of the 7th and 8th grade last year, but you can see in general, these are students who are identifying as lesbian, gay, bisexual, or others, so they're not identifying as straight. Kids appear to be coming out in larger numbers, and we're gonna assume that that's because we're making more comfortable safe spaces for that, so that's good news, I think. The next page is a graph comparing students who had sex and then at the rate which they used a condom. So one piece that looks like good news to me is that it looks like students are waiting longer to have sex. Unfortunately, it looks like condom use is down, except for in 12th grade and the senior Moving on to dating violence. We looked at the percentage of youth who reported they were dating someone or going out with someone, and of those students, we saw about 5% reporting someone that they are dating physically hurting them on purpose in the last 12 months. The next question, of the students that reported having sex, it looks like almost 20% had reported that they were forced to do so. During the past month, how many times were you dating? Were you, did someone you were dating or going out with force you to do sexual things you did not want? And that is just over 10%. Now, that's just 7th to 12th grade. Moving on to school safety. On the left side, we have students who did not go to school at least one day last month because they felt unsafe. You can see a significant rise, so it went from 6% to 8%. But on the other side, so we do have a little bit of violence prevention funding, so you can see that at least one physical fight on school property in the last year, we have significantly gone down. So it looks like there's been a lot of work in the school and other places, and we're reducing violence as far as fighting. When you look at bullying, bullying is on the rise. We have the oranges now, the blue is the last time around, so you can see there's a lot more bullying, especially in middle school. Looking at a little bit of good news, we asked students if you think that it would be, if there was a good chance you would be seen as cool if you defended someone who was being verbally abused at school. And you can see that, I was surprised that the number for middle school is higher than the number of high school, but we have almost 50% of middle schoolers answering yes to that question, and then we have 40% of high schoolers. Cyberbullying in the last 12 months seems to be some, it's all over the place, really. You can see that blue 8th grade and that orange 10th grade is the same group of students, which I thought was interesting. Other than that, it seems to be pretty much going down, so that's good news. Bullying on school property in the last 12 months is on the rise. I already told you that, sorry. It's a little hard on my packet here. Okay, last are some good news. Protective factors. So as I mentioned before, protective factors are really important because they help combat some of these risk factors we see. So you are at less risk, even if you have high risk factors, if you have high protective factors, you could be at a lower risk than someone with no risk factors. So protective factors are really, really important. These are some important things that are happening in the schools. There are a lot of chances for students at my school to get involved in school activities outside of class. We have over 90% of students reporting yes to that question. Opportunities to talk to my teacher one-on-one, we have over 80% saying yes. My teachers notice when I'm doing a good job and let me know about it. We have 70% saying yes to that question. We do see a little bit of decline in these areas, but they're still really good numbers, and they're still really important for combating some of this risk that we see. That is all. Do you wanna, Leanna? Do you wanna, okay. We also, this is not the copy with the vaping numbers, so if people want vaping numbers, they can contact me.
Great. So I don't use a microphone because traditionally I'm loud to begin with. So I think just some important takeaways and some important points that I think you all should understand about. The survey itself was done in April of last year. We did it with, in lots of discussion ahead of time about surveying our kids, and what does that look like, and how do kids take surveys in middle school and high school, and do they, are they honest with their opinions? Are they doing it by themselves? Are they in a group with other kids doing it? So there's some factors that are involved in surveys that can skew your numbers a little. Nonetheless, they are important items that we focus in on as a school district on a daily basis. So having the data to support where our focus is and where we're going with our students in terms of paying attention to their social, emotional, their mental health needs, and their extracurricular activity needs, certainly involving drug use, alcohol use, and substance abuse in general. And then looking at sexualized activity and how our children are feeling about themselves and how they identify is also important information for us to have and not to hide. So albeit, the numbers can sound disturbing for the folks that are working in the school district day in and day out, some of the information is helpful to us in determining how we move forward, but also reflecting on what we have done that has created some change. So I think when you see numbers in the area of bullying, we've paid an awful lot of attention in the Winthrop Public Schools to bullying, and I think kids are now learning and becoming more aware of what bullying is and what bullying is not, so we continue to address that with our students. Bullying and harassment are very specific, but also giving them strategies around that. When you looked at the cyberbullying and you heard that that is decreasing, some of the things that we've instituted, this is not the first survey we've had done, so it's not the first time we've seen the information, and certainly didn't wait till tonight to start to put things in place, but Screenagers was something that we instituted this year, last year, with our middle school students. That is a program that teaches students pretty much hands-on about what happens when you post something on the internet, what happens when you say something to somebody from behind a screen. And so we've done a lot of work around that as well. I have also, and I'll share with the committee, put together a history of what we have been doing in Winthrop Public Schools this year with a little bit of background from last year. The important piece of putting this together was the sharing of the information among the principals, so that we have an idea of what's happening in each building and how we can build upon that level to level. So when you're teaching students about substance abuse or about bullying at a kindergarten or first grade level, which we do, is very different from how we're addressing it at the middle school level. So more information to come on that in my superintendent's report, but I also would like to introduce Leanna Rosione. Leanna is the Executive Director of CASA. We have worked together now for two years, known each other for life, but worked together for two years on coming up with a plan, how to integrate a triad of support. So Leanna and I working together along with Amy and the other folks involved in CASA is helpful. I disseminate that information to the principals, and we get various activities together, but we clearly have identified that there is a piece missing that we feel strongly needs to be addressed at a higher level from us in terms of encouragement and providing information like we're providing tonight, and it's that missing piece of the triangle that we need to bring into our two-person group and make it a three-person group, which is families. So reaching out more to our families and giving our families strategies, sort of this triad of homeschool and community around items such as you saw in this survey. So that is a commitment that Leanna and I have made to each other, along with the principals, in terms of getting more information out to our parents and asking them to do more as parents and becoming more involved with us. And as a parent of not one, two, or three, but four students, I have not always done enough in educating my children, and I do this for a living. So, and Leanna, you know, I'm sure can share some of the same information, but we feel as though it is our job to make sure that we encourage parents to get involved and to have those difficult conversations about drinking, about drugs, about alcohol, about sex, with your children at an appropriate age level, and we feel the need to start to disseminate some of that information to our parents about how to go about having those talks. I clearly recall the first time I had to have a talk with one of my kids about something, and I didn't even know where to begin, and I do this for a living. So I can imagine being a parent, never having faced an issue like this and not knowing how to talk about it. So our goal is to make sure we provide the parents with some tools and encourage them to get involved. So I'm gonna let Leanna just for two minutes, she's gonna introduce some people and give you some information, and then we have some other presentations.
Hi.
So if you would like this, feel free.
No, I don't, I don't have it.
You yell too.
It's not as many people in here as I suppose it's good. Everybody can hear me, I'm sure. So my name is Leanna Rosione. I've been working for CASA for, God, it feels like a very long time, but in various capacities since it started, but since we had a very large funding shift recently, we have kind of made some changes to our programming and changes to our structure. So Amy is still very much part of CASA, as you can see with her doing this presentation tonight, but she has another job and so has taken more of a backseat, and she'll be working with me for certain hours a week, kind of helping me with some of the grants that we do and some of the other reporting that we have to do, but I have taken over as the Executive Director and will ensure that all of our programming is moving forward. As Lisa had said, you know, the big piece for us as an organization and our collaboration with the school and what we're seeing in kind of the 10 years that we've been doing this grant that funded us to do this survey, is that, you know, we need this triad that we keep talking about. You know, we have a really great collaboration with the schools. We do a lot of different things inside the school, out of the school, connecting kids to various things, but the biggest component that we're seeing or the biggest thing that we feel like we're missing in terms of this triad is at home, and what happens at home, and everybody kind of coming together on the same front. You know, I, the presentation first went live at the town council meeting the other day, and as a follower of the lovely Facebook page, whatever the heck it's called, Winthrop Discussion, something, people started talking about the data, and parents were concerned, and that's exciting for me. I want parents to know what's happening in the school. I want parents to know what kids are reporting and how, as a community, we can respond to that. And there's no triad in terms of being able to be impactful without including what's happening at home, and having parents have great dialogue with their kids around these topics. And for parents and families that are struggling, who to reach out to, how to get support, how to get services, who to talk to about these kinds of things. So we feel like, you know, our message has been heard with this particular data, and we're really kind of excited to kind of take this data on the road and find unique ways to kind of have this dialogue with parents and with families. So we're kind of, again, bringing that triad, you know, together to really be most impactful for the families that we're working with. I was over in the corner on my phone trying to pull up the data for the vaping stuff. I couldn't get it fast enough, so I'm sorry that I don't have the number. However, it's probably... It's 37%. Thank you. I'm like from 34 to 37. What? 34 in 2016, 37 in 2018. That's just lifetime use. Lifetime use. So we're seeing the numbers of vaping increase. In 2016, when we pulled the data and we did the survey, vaping was kind of first being introduced, so it was only natural for the numbers to go up. I'm sure they're gonna continue to go up, and so we need to strategize on how we're gonna handle that. A piece of CASA's funding is something that's called SAPSY, and I brought a gentleman by the name of Ryan here that I want to introduce to you guys, and he's gonna talk a little bit about the initiatives that we have for that. But I just want to also make sure that you guys are aware that CASA did lose the majority of its funding, but we're still here, we're still functioning, we're still operating. Danny is our new youth person. Danny, you wanna give like a big giant wave? So I'm gonna introduce him as well. I want the community to be aware that he's here. Our youth programming is moving, it's up and running. Everything that we were doing before under Amy is gonna continue. We're continuing to apply for more grants to be able to offer more to the community, but at the baseline minimum right now, our board has made sure that we restructured our budgets so that the youth programming that we had previously is intact and is moving forward into the school year. So really quick, Danny, do you just wanna come up and introduce yourself? I wanna make sure people see your face, they know who you are, they know about you, and then I want to introduce Ryan really quick to just talk about the strategies for vaping, and then we promise we'll let you get back to your meeting. Thank you. All right. Go ahead. This is your school committee.
Cool. Oh, hello. Hi. My name's Danny, Danny Lamac. Yeah, I'm the new youth, yeah, Youth Programs Coordinator at CASA. I have about 10 years' experience working in health education for adolescents and a little bit less for like middle school-age kids. So I think going forward, the, I think you actually raised a really good point about being a parent but also being an educator and like still finding like this difference between being able to talk to a large majority of kids about health, but then when you have like this connection with a child, like this relationship that's kind of vastly different between normal, like the rest of like the kids that you work with, you hit like a wall and you don't really know how to talk about it. So I think going forward, one of the things that I want to do is encourage a lot of the teenagers and the kids to sometimes take the initiative to have that conversation, start having that with their peers, giving them information, evidence-based practices, and like seeing where that goes from there, and hopefully that can encourage parents, educate the parents a little bit from like the bottom up rather than like from the top down.
Good point.
Okay.
And so I had mentioned before, a piece of our funding is something that we call SAPSY, and that's a regional initiative with Saugus, Chelsea, Revere, and Winthrop. And what's amazing is that the Bureau of Substance Abuse Services has allowed us as a region to choose vaping as our area that we want to impact the most. So Ryan, and who you will see in the community, he is our regional SAPSY person and is responsible for implementing our strategies within the community. So our hope is that he's gonna be more involved in the schools, and he'll kind of talk a little bit about what he's hoping to do, but he, you know, works cooperatively with CASA to ensure that what we've been approved for is coming to fruition for Winthrop and the other communities around us. So Ryan, so do you have a friend?
Thank you. Thank you, Kukumai, for having me and everyone for being here. It's great to see you, everyone. So the last year, I've been a part of the Substance Abuse Prevention Collaborative Grant, which works in Chelsea, Revere, Saugus, and Winthrop, and what we do is youth substance use prevention. So for the past year, I've been kind of almost gathering intel and data and whatnot and working with the state to get this plan approved. I spent last winter and spring meeting people here in the community in Winthrop, learning more about it. We all came to the determination that in all four communities, vaping was the biggest issue, right? That was the number one thing that came up over and over. In Chelsea, Revere, all the numbers are very comparable. So what we've decided through the state is that we are going to do a social marketing campaign, right? So working with CASA as well as youth group through MGH at, in Chelsea, youth group in Saugus, and then, which I've helped get off the ground where I've spent actually the majority of my time this last year, and then in Revere, another one sponsored through MGH. We are gonna be working together. The kids of CASA are all gonna do a regional collaboration on a social marketing campaign, whether that be through social media, advertising, but it's gonna be working within the school. So as troubling as all this news is to hear about vaping and things like that, I can actually say, and this isn't some crazy thing, last Thursday, I was in Winthrop and I went to Deer Island just to eat my dinner before I came, and I was just sitting there, it was nice and peaceful, and some kids pulled up in the car next to me and were vaping, so I really can't escape it wherever I go. So I drove away, and I was like, I can't think this, right? So it's just, and they look about high school-age kids, so this is a thing that, it is real, it's a real problem, but it's, I think there's a lot of solutions coming, so I think that's something to be very hopeful about. It's very easy to look at the 37% of students that are vaping, but there's also 63%, I hope that that's right, that aren't, right? And it's focusing on that, and that's something that we're gonna bring with the region. I think that's gonna take Winthrop to the next level, being able to work with these other youth. So I'm very excited to be able to do that, and I appreciate being in your community this last year. It's been a tremendous opportunity. So thank you very much.
Thank you. So just in, you all set?
Yes, I'm good.
Okay, so just an important takeaway, and then we'll move on to our next presentation. I think as, sitting here listening to the information, it's concerning as, not only as a superintendent of schools, but also as a parent. I think it's important to note, like I said in the beginning, that this news is not new to us as a school community. It's something that we continue to focus on and work on in various stakeholders within our school, but this is not just a school issue and not just a problem with our youth that the school has to solve. The school district cannot do this alone. I don't pretend to think that we can. I don't pretend to take full responsibility to take it on. I do intend to put some responsibility everywhere, community, parents, and the school, working together. I think we can address the issues that we're seeing and make improvement if we work together as a group. Leanna and I have committed to that, and the Police Department and Fire Department work very closely with us. Although the news is somewhat shocking, it's more shocking to people who never really look at it and have no idea what's happening with the youth, and your child may not be one of the percentage rates that's the 37% of kids that are vaping, but I can tell you the day I found what I thought was a USB charger that my son showed me, and I said, "Oh, where'd you get that?" And he told me, which I won't reveal, and I said, "Oh, that's cool, you're gonna put it in the computer?" He goes, "Mom, it's a cigarette." He goes, "But it's not real cigarettes." He goes, but it's not real cigarettes, it's, it's water. And he was fully convinced that it was only water, and it was a vape. And, um, he's, he was 10. So I had no idea what it was, so my 10-year-old schooled me on what vaping was. So if you're a parent, that this is the first time that you're hearing this, I feel bad that you're shocked, but it is reality. So, um, we need to work together to, to address the issues because your entitlement to public school is going to end when your child graduates from high school or in some cases turns 22, and then you're in the real world. And vaping and substance abuse and sexualized behavior continues beyond the walls of the public school. So our job is to make sure that we are in a triad where our kids are developing the skills they need to survive in the real world. Um, so I thank you for your presentation, I thank you for your commitment to the school, always willing to help, um, and, and I thank you for somewhat shocking the school committee, uh, this evening, but they have had the, the information ahead of time too, so they are aware, uh, of what we are doing. I don't know if the school committee has any direct questions for this group, but...
I have two questions. First of all, thank you...
I was hoping you could do some of the questions under the policy section.
Oh, fine.
I thought you were asking, I'm sorry. Never mind, I'm sorry, you go ahead, Suzanne. I'm sorry.
First of all, thank you very much for this wonderful report, and I am sad to hear. I have a, two questions. One is, what is the chance that some of this data is underreported? That's... Yes, would you...
Sure. The chance that it underreported is pretty high, that's most likely. What happens is, we survey in the school, so first, I want to reiterate what, what Lisa said, that this is a community survey, it's not a survey about our schools. Um, this is a community survey about what young people in our, in our town are going through. Um, there's a really easy value of the school, it's not like this is all the youth. The youth that aren't being captured are the youth that were suspended, the youth that dropped out, the youth that weren't in school that day. So you're getting, most likely, the better, the better bunch, right? The youth that have the least risk are the ones in school present to take the survey. Um, you're definitely not getting any of the higher-risk students who aren't in school. So, um, that's one piece of it, and then, uh, around, you know, bullying, vaping, there's a lot of stuff around language that, you know, it might say e-cigarette and a kid might only know Juul. So that's one other thing, and then, uh, you know, it might say bullying, but they don't consider what happens in the bullying, so there's that piece to it too.
And, um, my last question is, how does this data compare with the other surrounding communities that we're currently working with or, or others?
It's a great question. So we're on par with most communities in Massachusetts. None of our numbers are really that much higher than the state average. Our ventricle rates are a bit higher considering, you know, the population and the size of the town and the real other risk factors, but other than that, our rates are pretty standard. You can look at the Massachusetts, um, numbers, the YRBS Massachusetts numbers, you can also look at Monitoring the Future, which is a survey that tells you the state data for the whole country. Um, but we are pretty much on par with the rest of the state.
Thank you.
Right, and to that really quick thing, um, just, I think it's important to note in terms of the survey, like the survey that we choose, the survey that we implement, we've been doing the survey for the, the grant that we received, requested that we do it every two years for 10 years, and this, uh, last April was the last...
Right.
Uh, the last, I'm sorry, the last time we would do it under that funding cycle. Um, so most communities use the same survey. So up until, uh, when Amy came on board to last time and then this time, in terms of the two thousand sixteen and two thousand and eighteen, prior to that, we used what's called the YRBS, which is a youth risk behavior survey. Uh, we switched it two years ago to something that's called the PNA, which is what you're seeing now, and it's the Prevention Needs Assessment. Um, and the reason, you know, Amy came to us with this, uh, idea that she wanted to not only use the questions that were in the YRBS, uh, but she also liked the, the fact that the PNA asked protective factors, so that the, the positive things. Instead of just focusing on all of that things, what are the good things that we can also use to bolster? Um, so we switched, but it's important to note that most communities, almost all communities around us, are using the same survey. Um, so it might be great to maybe highlight different things or ask you different things, but in terms of the way that surveys, you know, work and implementing them, this is what we have to be most impactful with the state, um, and is to, to be able to properly compare our data to others around us.
Thanks, Felicity.
Just, you know.
Any further...
Thank you, guys.
Questions or comments?
Any other comments?
I have, um, one comment, just want to thank you, I know there's a lot of work that went into this, but what concerned me the most, um, was students who consider suicide. You know, anytime you do a survey, there's a, you know, about four percent margin of error, and since 2013, it was in the eighteen to fifteen percent area, which is right in that quadrant of error, in that same range, and I think that's definitely concerning. I know we've, uh, addressed it, but that's something I think we need to talk about more and say it's a real issue before, you know, something serious happens. I think we need to have a serious conversation about that.
Absolutely.
All right, any further questions or comments? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, uh, moving on with the agenda, we have some, uh, representatives from Zonta International Club of Chelsea. If you'd like to come on up and introduce yourself.
Would you, would you like? Absolutely. Thank you so much, I appreciate it. Hello, everyone. Um, thank you very much for allowing me to sit here. Um, so I don't speak as fast as the young ones, so, so please bear with me. Um, but I have, um, a little speech prepared here, and I just want to say, I just want to start off with just saying, uh, the chairman, Valentino Copia Bianco, school committee members, superintendent of schools, Lisa Howard, town council president, Ron Vacchia, thank you for affording us the opportunity to speak with you tonight. My name is Joan Linzal O'Hassie, and I'm the current president of the Zonta Club of Chelsea. The Zonta Club of Chelsea is a professional service organization to get dedicated to the advancement and service advocacy of women and children worldwide. So what's in the name? Chelsea Clock Company? Chelsea Soldiers Home? Their names were not derived from the city in which they, their names were derived from the city which they began. Chelsea Clock Company sells all over the world. Chelsea Soldiers Home houses veterans from all over the, the country. Their names are not geographically binding, and neither is the city, the Zonta Club of Chelsea. Our club welcomes members and provides services to not only Chelsea, but the surrounding communities of Everett, Revere, Winthrop, and Saugus. And I find it's very interesting that the, um, the people that have, this, did the presentation today with the SAPSE, they kept, they're covering the same communities that we cover. Even though we no longer have members who either reside or work in Winthrop, we continue to support the high school and families in need in Winthrop. Our members are committed to, to, to change the status of women and the way they are perceived and the way the, they perceive themselves. We do more than advocate for women, we do real work. We volunteer countless hours assisting those who provide safe harbor for battered women and their children and teenagers in high school with the, with the domestic violence. We provide food gift cards for needy families during the holidays, and we organize numerous fundraising events over the, in the year. Over the past 38 years, since Chelsea Zonta was incorporated in 1980, these events have generated close to $400,000 in donations. The proceeds from these fundraises support an assortment of causes. Zonta is an international organization, however, two-thirds of the funds we raise remain local, which are dedicated to Winthrop and our surrounding communities. Scholarships are awarded annually to worthy young women from local high schools. In fact, since 1980, the Zonta Club of Chelsea has awarded over $26,000 to young women graduating from Winthrop High School. We have also provided nearly $12,000 in food certificates to Winthrop High Department, to the Winthrop School Department to distribute to the, at, to, at their digression, discretion, sorry, uh, to the neediest of families. The most, most recently, we donated, uh, last week, we, we had the, these, their food certificates, um, delivered. And like, like many organizations, the Zonta Club of Chelsea has experienced a decrease in membership. Due to the natural progression of time, membership has declined, and we no longer, and now we no longer have members in Winthrop. Um, you can take a look. We have been doing this for a number of weeks now, and we've been presenting, and we still have to present to other communities that we serve. And our members that either work or reside in the community that we serve accompany us to our, to the community that we're looking for your assistance. You can tell there's no one here. No one from Winthrop belongs to us anymore, but it does not stop us from helping you. So we are asking for your help tonight. We are asking the school committee to declare a call to action to the entire Winthrop school community, the administrators, the teachers, the paraprofessionals, the union representatives, and all those in the town who work to make the town worthy of its children. In all the years we have been providing services and scholarships in Winthrop, we have never had, nor have we asked for assistance from the Winthrop school community. We should have. Uh, we do not ask for your help on behalf of Chelsea Zonta. We ask for your help on behalf of the children of Winthrop. Without a strong and vibrant membership, we can't possibly sustain the level of charitable services we provide or the amount of scholarship dollars we, we award annually in Winthrop. Without more help, it may become impossible for us to continue supporting our causes in Winthrop at the current level. We have given you an informational packet about the Zonta, uh, with Zonta International Welcomes Brochure, the Centennial Magazine, um, and the, a snapshot of the history of Zonta, which includes a list of the service donation recipients, a membership application, and contact information for this Chelsea Zonta. Share it with your friends, family members, or coworkers. Contact a Zontian you know or through, or through the contact information provided in that brochure. I guarantee the more you know about, you learn about Zonta and what we do, the more you will want to join us. Do it now, don't hesitate. If we can't put our children first, who can we put first? True heroes are those who go the extra mile for someone else. They put their heart and soul into helping others. We are not here tonight looking for accolades, we are here tonight looking for members. Zonta is looking for a few strong individuals, women who can stand up for, to, for herself and her beliefs. Please make our presence known and our contributions to the community known. We need active, engaged members willing to commit in, to the efforts of our mission. Without assistance from Winthrop, it may no longer be possible for our limited membership to continue support our, in this community. And I, uh, I believe that with, uh, going forward, if we, the, the, what it boils down to, the more members, the more fundraisers, the more successful fundraisers, the more we raise, the more we can give back to the communities. As we can see here by the presentation tonight with these young folks, um, the vaping and the, um, the domestic violence, um, and the alcohol and the drugs, those all need programs to help curtail that. We are here to help, we want to help, but we can't do that if we don't have the funds to help you. So we're asking you to help us by gaining membership, and then we, the more money we raise, the more we can support the, the town, Winthrop. Thank you very much. If you have any questions...
Any questions or concerns for Joan?
No.
I just want to say, thank you so much, sounds like you're doing, uh, a wonderful, wonderful job. I, I don't know what capacity as a board we could do to support you. Um, I, I don't know exactly how, but personally...
You can become members.
Yeah, I was just going to say...
You don't have to be a woman to be a member.
Yeah, personally, I'd be more than happy to take a look at this and...
Yes.
Fill this out and give you a, a yearly donation or whatever that may be personally, and invite my, encourage my members to do, but I don't think we could publicly, as a committee endorse that.
Right.
But what I could do is personally, again, pass this around and put on Facebook and...
That's what we, yes, because we have to get it. If we, if you get it out there, then people should be able, they'll, they'll come to us.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And again, just a thank you to Zonta, they, they did provide us with gift cards that we are able to, um, give to our principals so that, um, they can disseminate those to families in need. Uh, this is my second year here and the second year that Zonta has, uh, come to the office to provide those. The first year, I had no idea who you were, or why you were there, I figured there was a problem and you, somebody wanted to see me, uh, and it was somebody coming bearing gifts, and that helped our families, uh, many of our families, so I thank you for that, we appreciate it.
Thank you, and we also provide the scholarships every year to those who...
Correct, correct, yes.
Thank you.
So thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, uh, moving on, I guess we have a representative from Select, uh, from Solar Select Company.
It's up to you if you want to, you can come here or come up here.
Good evening, school committee. My name's Matt Schwartz, I'm with Select Energy. Thanks for seeing me again. All right. We've made a proposal to install a solar photovoltaic system here on the high school. We presented to your committee a few meetings back. We subsequently, uh, the outcome of that meeting was, there was a request for us to reengage, um, with outside council and also to make sure that the new town manager, Austin Faison, was brought up to speed on what the project entailed, its merits, its benefits, and answer any questions. I sat with Austin and the interim town administrator for three hours in their office to work through every question that the interim posed, and he did a very thorough job. We were able to address a couple of the concerns that were raised, and we made those changes in the agreement. I believe there have also been some other conversations that have been made, kind of one-on, one-on-one with some folks in the community who may have had some questions or concerns about the solar, uh, project, and I wanted to come tonight to ask the committee to, um, discuss, answer any questions, and ideally, uh, take your, ask for your, uh, approval to have either the superintendent or the town manager to sign off on the agreement. Uh, the, the program that we're applying for opens Monday. We don't have to apply for it, we can't. We're going to need to go through the utility interconnection process, apply for the incentive program, and then come to do a, a building permit application and, and start the work with proper scheduling and notice and all that. So I appreciate the time here, and I wanted to ask if you folks have had a chance to review, if there are any questions I can answer, um, anything else you'd like to hear about or learn about, the merits or, or specifics of the project?
Questions or concerns?
I, I have a question on the timing of, you said the program opens Monday, but you aren't obligated to start then. When does it, what time pressures are you under?
Well, the, the construct of the incentive program is such that as more projects get interconnected, then the incentives decline, and the, lower incentives equal higher PPA rates. So we'd encourage you to move in a, move sooner than later unless there's something that would prevent you from wanting to go forward, in which case we'd want to know what that is to try to address it, and if it's, you know, something that prevents you from doing so, then you've got, you know, it's your building. Um, but the, so the sooner the better. So we made this proposal last year. We went through a, a few deliberations with council, um, with the transition in the corner office up the street, and there were some, candidly, there were some very, um, legitimate concerns about how are we going to work, what's the implication to the integrity of the building, in particular the roof. Um, we've, we've, believe we've addressed those by, we maintain the integrity of the warranty and take responsibility for any damage we in, uh, inflict on the building by having to repair it. Um, and our standard procedure is to, we hire a roofer, they do an inspection. We then perform our installation, we hire them if there's any roof penetrations, like, uh, this, this is not a, a system that will be fastened to the roof, but if the electric conduit runs that's scheduled to run... But if the electric conduit runs that's scheduled to run, punch through your roof and come down. Otherwise, the architects would, you know, I don't know what they do to us, but they wouldn't like it. And we've done a full rendering on how the conduit's gonna run through the electric room, tap a breaker, and then make sure that it's accessible outside for a disconnect switch. At the end of the installation, that roofing contractor, who's certified by the manufacturer, writes a letter to the warranty owner, so town of Winthrop, or I don't know if it's school district, that states that we've acknowledged that a PV system's been installed and the warranty remains intact. And we do that with every project that has a roof warranty. And this one does. So, we intend on doing that here as well.
Okay, thank you.
So, just go down the line.
I paid attention to this process ever since the school was being built. I'm in full support, have me. I'm 100% in support of Solar in general. I think it definitely makes sense in this situation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
How is the, if the warranty is breached, and, you know, and the roof is damaged, are you self-insuring this under warranty, or do you have an insurance policy in place so that if you're not, if your company wasn't solvent, 10 years from now, we have a problem? Would there be an insurance policy in place to, to cover that repair or replacement?
Yeah, so, a couple of questions, I think, in there.
Yeah.
We're insured, commercial liability. It's a million and two million per incident. It's, it's a five million umbrella. The contract requires that you remain insured as well, so that if there's damage to the building, believe it or not, at this magnificent structure to our little, you know, like the frosting gets damaged, if the cake gets hurt. But the, yeah, we're, we're obliged to maintain it for the term of the agreement.
Okay.
And we are insured, and if we hurt something, we fix it, or you can make us fix it. We do though. Too many customers to not be responsible.
Mr. Fabiano.
So, I've had several conversations with several different people.
Town manager, a couple of people from your company, one being the, probably a supervisor on the actual job operations. And, I mean, I like what I hear. But again, I'm, I'm concerned about, this, this is a pristine roof that we have right now. There are no leaks. When, and I said this before the last meeting, there'll be several people, 10, 12, six, or whatever, tramping around on that roof, and I know they take precautions, they explain to me what they do as far as putting some pieces of foam down in the high-traffic areas and all that stuff. But there's still a chance, or the potential for some roof damage. And then, you really don't know about, you know, roof damage until it starts raining. And then, especially if you got the interior damage. But they've assured me that things like that can be addressed, and hopefully, nothing happens. That's the biggest thing. I like the idea of the roofing company coming down to do a pre-inspection of the roof to show that the roof's pristine. There is a rubber membrane that's, you know, not, hasn't been penetrated right now. And that, you know, if anything does happen, it's gonna be on Select. So, I'm pretty happy right now. I shouldn't say that. I'm, I'm okay with it. I'm not a fan of this. I'm not a, I like the idea of getting energy from the sun, that's great. But at what expense to this roof, which is, it's quite a bit of money to put a roof on? So, I'm gonna vote for it, I'm gonna vote in favor of it. Because I've been assured that these things will be addressed, and, you know, you know, we're, we're responsible for the buildings and grounds. And I feel as though that if something does happen, hopefully it won't. But there is a potential, and if it does, that will be, things will be fixed and it'll be satisfactory.
I really appreciate that, and I'm glad we had a chance to speak with you guys because I have three kids in public schools, and I want them to be focused on education and safety and all the right stuff, not facilities.
Sue?
I'm with you.
Okay.
President Vecchia?
I would hope that we could move forward this evening with a positive recommendation. I do have a letter that you've all received from the, from the town manager dated October 23rd, 2018. I would recommend that the school committee proceed with the attached solar power purchase agreement with Select. It should be noted that Select has made many efforts to meet the town's concerns in the document and made a recommended, and made recommended changes. This recommendation is brought forward along with a favorable review, review from the town's legal counsel. So, I'd like to see us get this thing going.
Would you like to make a motion?
Can I, can I just ask one more question before you guys do your motion?
I'm sorry.
I apologize. So, facilities have not been my life in the past, but have become my life very quickly over the past couple of years. What is my life continuously is children. So, my questions and concerns, which have been answered pretty, pretty well, is that the overall organization of when the actual project takes place and what, what input I'll be having, along with the high school principal and the committee, of course, in terms of the timing and the impact on student learning. Being up on the roof, you know, there's a reason we don't have the gym on the roof. So, you know, having students here during the school day and having construction going on up on the roof, I'm certainly satisfied and, and know the legal ramifications around folks being on the school property during school time and, and being properly quarried and making sure that that process is running through, I'm gonna say me, but it's really Patty, to make sure that all folks that are on the property. And these questions have been answered for me, but I think it's important for the parents to know that if we are gonna be having a project go on during the school day, that there will be conversation, there will be a point person making sure that we're not drilling and using loud tools over students' heads during MCAS week, as well as making sure that anyone who is on the property is properly quarried, and that there is a project manager of record so that we're able to make sure that that flow of information continues.
Yes, so all, all valid, and we're, again, not the primary reason for the school's operation. We'd like to bring the, the football team in early in the morning to help carry things to the roof. No.
They've moved a classroom or two this year.
We, the contract requires quarry and sorry background checks will run through your office. You'll, you'll run them and tell us if it's okay or not. We do a construction planning meeting in advance of mobilizing anything. We sit down with whoever has input and stake in the building operations. Everything from access times, where we can stage, where we can go, where we can't go, roof access. Then we, when the building permit's ready, and when we're ready to mobilize, we come in a day or so early and put up safety rail, hard rail around the perimeter of the roof. Establish kind of protocol for ins and outs. And then, on lift day, which is almost always a Saturday at schools, we lift all, all the equipment we can and materials to the roof and then spread them out. And really, the heavy mechanical work is about a week or two. And we fill up a couple dumpsters and remove all the debris. And that is where people are laying down sheet protectors under the racking system, the racking footers, the ballast blocks, panels tied together. And then it's really electricians, kind of the, most of the folks are gone. There'll be two or three people coming in and tying, pulling wire and connecting conduits and putting in the inverters. And then working in the loading dock area out at the mechanical room by the transformer and the meter. They pull a disconnect out back. If you have a protocol that we establish to say, hey, if the sign-in or there's no access at these times, then we'll work with you to make sure that happens because we sincerely believe it's your school and we're just guests. I'll give you an example. We did two projects for Pittsburgh City Schools. And Memorial Middle School, we weren't allowed on-site for MCAS periods. Cause-
I'm glad you're used to that.
Well, you can, you can hear us. I mean, it's, we're on the roof. If you're listening, you can hear people up there. It's not, you know, cutters and a lot of mechanical work. It's, you know-
Distracting footprints.
It's that type of thing. And it is, it is a construction project, but it is thankfully, you know, 99% outside. And we expect the entire project will take about a month, about two weeks of, you know, mechanical and about two weeks of electric. And then it's really just waiting for the inspector to come, and that's 10 minutes, 30 minutes tops on-site? And then waiting for the utility. Now, that might take a year or two, but no. That, if it wasn't for the utility, we'd be done in about a month. But the whole thing unfortunately takes about six months because of that.
I just have one question.
Internal space is being used. We don't have to dedicate a room or anything. It's all on the exterior of the building, correct?
Right, so even- porch party, and, yeah, it's outside. I mean, if you let us in up a back staircase, great. We do work in the main electric room, so it's not tying in outside at the transformer. We do, you know, someone has to run conduit, pull it through. There were some already run, but we have to run our own. It's gotta come through, and then it goes outside, and then comes back in, and they're working the electric room. So, your guys, your maintenance director, I can't think of his name.
Rich Foon.
Miguel.
McHale and Rich.
Okay, so there were, Steve's my guy, he's been mostly working on-site. And there, you know, we feel we'll work within their, you know, rules. And if we need something that doesn't work, we'll, you know-
But your mechanics would all be exterior. They wouldn't be taking space in any-
No, no, we don't stage inside. We're gonna have, the one thing that I think we identified from the get-go is that parking's a premium here, right? So, we're gonna need a few spaces. But we'll figure that out on kind of construction planning day.
Give you a break in the alley, right?
Yeah.
President Vecchia, do you would like to make a motion?
I'd like to move that the Winthrop school committee approved the power purchase agreement dated October 23rd, 2018 between the town of Winthrop and Select Energy Development.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Powell. Any discussion on the motion?
I think we just did.
Ms. Hames, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Fabiano?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Mr. Vecchia?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
No.
Mr. Kepaviano?
Yes. That's six in the affirmative, one in the negative. The motion is adopted and approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
So, I'll work with Austin.
Yep.
Okay, so, and then we'll be back in touch.
And hopefully, when the project's going on, it's okay, I'd like for us to be invited, maybe see it and check in on this.
Yeah, we'd be really happy to. We know a lot of work went into this. I know some of the school building committee members. So, we're, you know, we're grateful for the opportunity, and we'll absolutely keep you apprised.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, moving on with the agenda, I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the October 29th, 2018 meeting. Do I have a seconded by President Vecchia? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Then there's one abstention. The motion is adopted. Moving on to financial and business procedures. Payroll warrant, sorry, warrant SVW 19-18 on the amount of $333,533.96. Do I have a motion to approve the warrant? Motion by President Vecchia, seconded by Mrs. Swope. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion is adopted. We have payroll warrant SPW 19-6 in the amount of $674,610.17. Do I have a motion to approve the payroll warrant? So moved by Mrs. Swope, seconded by President Vecchia. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? We have two abstentions on that. The motion is adopted. We have two budget transfers, one of the amount of $126,862, and a transfer in the amount of $228,066. Do I have a motion to approve both budget transfers? Motion by President Vecchia, seconded by Mr. Perrin. I can't hear down there. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion is approved. All right. We do have one buildings and grounds request for the five-district partnership educators showcased. They're requesting use the Daniel Shapiro Auditorium on May 28th, 2019. Do I have a motion to approve the request?
It's two dates. Maybe the 28th, was it the 28th and 30th or something? Or is it just one date?
There's a rehearsal.
Rehearsal.
There's a rehearsal, and then there's an event.
All right, okay. The 20th and the 30th. Do I have a motion to approve the request?
Make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Fabiano, seconded by Mr. Matucci. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. Moving on, we do have a few subcommittee reports. Mr. Matucci, would you like to update us with how the superintendent evaluation committee?
We had a meeting this afternoon pertaining to the, you know, one of our roles here is to evaluate the superintendent. And the superintendent submitted the goals, there's four goals that she has submitted. We are going to distribute those to the full committee. And if they approve, wanted to add, or whatever, they could make the changes at the next meeting if they want, or we can vote to approve them at the next meeting. So, the evaluation's starting, and it will be complete next June, June of 19.
All right, Ms. Powell, would you like to give us an update on the policy subcommittee meeting?
Yes. We, meant this afternoon, we will be, we are changing the residency policy. We'll be bringing that to the next meeting to make it more in line with the state policies and tighten up the requirements on that, and make it more clear on what the, what people need to do in order to stay enrolled and prove that they are residents here. We also discussed the possibility of having students in the high school buy Chromebooks. We are getting more information about that, but that is something that we're looking to help offset the costs. We also have looked at and are still considering a technology fee and looking at the implications of that. We looked at the membership of the school improvement committees and have opted at this point to make no changes to that. And then we are also reviewing our advertising policies. That's the policies of distributing materials from different groups, community groups. We're looking at what would make the most sense to be consistent and fair and across the board and not put ourselves at risk of needing to distribute materials that we don't want to. Yes?
The students buying Chromebooks, does this mean that they could, that's the only technology they can buy? Gen, Chromebooks?
We would sell them the Chromebooks that are not, we would sell them the exact Chromebooks that are distributed through the school, and that's the only thing that they would be able to use for school because they would come loaded with the materials that are needed for the various testings. And they would also come encrypted so that they would have limitations, the same limitations on access to various things. We don't want them to have access to during school.
Okay.
So, in other words, you couldn't just go and get the bargain basement Chromebook? It doesn't have all the software that's, that's needed?
Doesn't come loaded with the software and the security systems that enable you to use it?
And I think, so basically, they can't go out and get an Apple. They have to get the Chromebooks that we have.
Correct.
There are no other options. It's the Chromebook that we have.
That's, that's the only thing that we would be selling
Right.
for our students because that is what we, that is the piece of technology that we provide the students with, that we manage. And we would continue through the program to manage that Chromebook as long as a student was attending school here. So, the Chromebook would come loaded with all the management systems that we have on it, security, access to all of our online testing and state testing. Students are required to use a Chromebook now, and we provide them with that Chromebook. The benefit of having one of your own would be that you would maintain that same Chromebook. We've heard some feedback from parents in that they don't like their students getting a different Chromebook every year. They'd rather they have one Chromebook, the same one distributed back to them. So, that was some feedback that the parents had provided us. So, we thought of the potential of offering it to our students and seeing whether or not they wanted to purchase their own. At the end of the purchase, when they were to graduate, or if they were to move and that Chromebook is purchased by them, we would take it back and unlock it through however technology does such a thing and release them from being kind of stuck to the parameters of the Chromebooks as designed for the Winthrop public schools. So, it's, we, right now, they are offered, students can buy them at various points through the PTO, I believe, during the school year, but not at the high school level for use at, at the middle and high school level.
And, and those that they buy from the PTO are not, they use them for school at home, but they can't bring them to school and use them instead of using our-
How much are they?
Chromebooks?
To, right now, the average Chromebook that we're buying, it depends upon the size. We have some nine-inch screens, we have some 12-inch screens. About $245 a piece, and that's different than how you would find them on Amazon because that's complete with programming, as well as some warranty information and some, they call it white glove service, which is, sounds silly, but it's really not. It's having a technician come out- It's having a technician come out and repair a Chromebook either onsite or us sending it back to the company to have it properly repaired, either under warranty or not, depending upon the issue.
All right. Moving on with the agenda, superintendent's report.
Yes, so in your packet, tonight I have provided you with a copy of the self-reflection guide. This is the New England Association of Schools and College Self-Reflection Guide that they provide to the school district. We have had one meeting already with a representative from the New England Association of Schools and Colleges and their job is to come out and do our accreditation. So, the accreditation process, as you know, is a long-term process that takes about a year to prepare for and then they will be out here in 2020 to look at our schools and do our evaluation. So, Principal Crombie has taken this guide and surveyed his teachers about how they would like to address it and has put together subcommittees for various portions of this so that it is not one person that is doing the self-reflection. It's actually broken out into the high school staff. So, people are assigned to different aspects of this and will be filling this out to give us really a true reflection across the board and not just the opinion of one person. So, I just wanted you to have a copy of that so you could thumb through it and take a peek at it. I'll update you. We've started the process last, last week, I believe it was introduced to the teachers. They had all signed up for various committees to be on, to participate in this. We're working with them on providing them with the time to do that as well as some credit for doing it in terms of PDPs. Athletically, I'll just give you some, a couple of little updates about athletics. Clearly, we are a group of talented kids and from our show this weekend, which was just amazing, I did win Split the Pot, full disclosure. I donated the money back just in case anyone's asking, but it was, it was amazing. Chicago was amazing. Equally as amazing is the work that's being done by the vocational school on our facility at Miller Field. It's moving along quickly. I have the opportunity to go in there a few times and great group of kids that are working and they're very respectful students and they have a great program coordinator there who is keeping a very close eye on our students. Our cheerleaders went to states this weekend and have now, they came in fourth, which is awesome, and they have qualified now for nationals, so we're waiting to hear some more on that. And our Powderpuff Girls, I went to the game to see them play. They were powerful. They played revere. We didn't come out on the winning end, but I can tell you they had a ton of fun and they were a great group of kids to watch. And thank you to the coaches who were on the field, complete with headsets. I don't know if they were turned on, but they had headsets on and they looked good. So, although we didn't come out with a W, we still had a great time. We are, facilities-wise, we are attempting to outfit a four-wheeler with a plow. As you all know, we, our Bobcat was a donation from the town, gave us capital improvement money and we've purchased a Bobcat to clear our sidewalks and as much of our facilities here and hopefully at the Fort Banks, Gorman Fort Banks School as well. We also have the Athiti Cummings School, which is across town. If you live in Winthrop, it's really far away from the high school, but technically it's not that far. I'm not so sure driving the Bobcat in the middle of a snowstorm is going to be a great idea, so we're looking at alternatives for the Athiti Cummings. So, spoke with McHale and RJ. RJ runs. Ray LaPreste is the custodian at the Athiti Cummings. And in those conversations, I believe, I believe Chief DeLaHanti happened to come into the room to ask me a question. So, of course, we picked his brain a little bit about what he may have in his garage. RJ was looking for, to outfit a four-wheeler with a plow. The idea behind it is to take the stress off of some of the custodians in terms of shoveling, be more efficient, get it done faster, certainly take the wear and tear off of the bodies of some of our custodians so they can continue to do the rest of their work during the day. So, we are in conversations with the police department about perhaps sharing one of their larger four-wheelers and using some of our money from our custodial funds at the Cummings School to put a plow on the front of it and make it a more efficient and quicker way to clear our sidewalks. So, collaboration with the police department is always a plus. Playground update in terms of facilities, still under facilities. We are awaiting two estimates from two separate playground companies. We have had a few meetings with a small group of people on a playground committee at the Cummings School, Nora Grimes, Kathleen Riley Cappuccio, myself, RJ, who's the custodian, and McHale, sort of reviewing where we've been with the playground and where we need to go in terms of the cost associated with it, the look of it, what we want to have out there in terms of a design for our students. So, we have spoken with two companies that have agreed to give us quotes based on some of the information that we gave them. I checked with both of them. Today is Monday, so that was Friday, and I'm hopeful that we'll have something next week. And I've spoken with the Buildings and Grounds Subcommittee Chair to get together to have some conversation about a timeline to move forward with the cost so that we can begin our planning for the remainder of this school year and into next year. And I will give you more as soon as I have those estimates from those two companies. Special education, the lease of the new van has been approved by the town council, so that should be on the road this week, which is going to alleviate some costs that I thought would drive our transportation line item and special education way over the top. Hopefully that will, leasing that vehicle and combining the runs will offset what I thought was going to be a potential deficit in special education transportation costs. So, I look forward to the delivery of that vehicle. We have a circuit breaker audit staying under special education that was doing, to be started in October. We've asked to have that moved to January. We seem to be an audit magnet right about now in terms of special education, which is, sort of comes in cycles. So, they were gracious enough to move that audit up while we address our coordinated program review needs that are before us in terms of an update that the department is looking for. Just an update in terms of our students. We have had some students move into the community. One of our students attends a collaborative and so when students move from one community to our community, if they are attending a collaborative school, the school district from which they moved was paying the bill when they lived in their district. When it's a collaborative school, the district that they move into assumes the cost of that collaborative. Little different than when it's a private, separate day school. That tuition stays with the school that they were in until, typically until the next fiscal year, depending upon the date that they move. I'm working with Jen O'Connell and Susan, looking at our current line item to see where we're at with our tuitions and whether or not we are going to have to look at our circuit breaker reserve fund for any additional support. We were hoping to continue to use circuit breaker money to offset costs in special education across the board. We'll continue to do that, but I feel it's important for the committee to be aware of when we have new students that do move in, what that impact is to the district. And circuit breaker was designed for that very, that very thing. So, when people see money sitting in a circuit breaker account, they sometimes tend to think you're saving money. We're not really saving, we're being mindful that the world continues and people move and there's not a budget line item set up for move-ins and this is from a special education perspective. If there is some money in that fund, that is what it's been designed for and that's what the Department of Revenue recommends you use that money for. So, we'll update you on that as more information rolls in on that. Kindergarten, which I feel like I talk about more than anything else. Kindergarten teacher has been hired. Her name is Emily Jenkins. She comes to us with experience from a couple of different communities and experience in early childhood education as well as first grade. Our materials, so she is here. She has been working in classrooms with the current kindergarten teachers who, each one of those classrooms that now has 26 students in them, three of the children in each one of those classrooms is being moved to this new classroom to create a new classroom of students. Emily has been in the classrooms, creating relationships, looking at student work, being a face. When you're five, it's nice to know who someone is in your classroom and paying some attention and identifying the students who she knows. We've identified those students that are moving to the new classroom, so she has taken time to make sure she makes a connection with those students. Students will be spending transition time tomorrow and Wednesday, and they did a little bit today with her in a sort of a special way and helping them become part of a new group of a classroom. Tomorrow night, we will have a meet and greet, sort of an invite-only session where the parents of students who have been identified to transition into the new classroom will have some time to spend alone with the teacher. And I say alone, it'll be alone with me and with the acting principal, who is Andrea O'Leary, as Ms. Pearson is out, as you know, on medical leave. Students will begin in that class as a whole class on the 26th when they return from the Thanksgiving break. And I believe that is it for me for this week.
Any personnel?
Personnel.
Plus that.
Yep. So, for this evening, we have no appointments, no resignations, no retirements. You have some postings in your packet that have been up already and I believe they went up prior to this, but an ELA teacher as a long-term substitute here at the high school, the instrumental band teacher, which is the band teacher that's doing the after-school programming funded through Viking Pride. So, that's been posted. I believe the person has been identified, as well as an instrumental band long-term substitute for a maternity leave, which is not coming up until January, but we felt this is sort of finding a needle in a haystack, so we wanted to get on top of it. We've reached out to some local colleges to, also to see if there are, if there is anybody graduating or anybody that needs an internship that could double-dip and be a long-term substitute and collect some hours as an intern. And we have some current staff that is willing to oversee that if we can grab somebody from Berkeley or from, you know, some, one of our in-town schools that would be willing to do that. So, we're keeping a close eye on that. Mr. Carley is all over it. And leave of absence, at this point, we have none.
Moving on with new business on our agenda, we have the second reading and adoption of the technology acceptable use policy. I'd like to make a motion to waive the second reading and approve the adoption of the policy.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Powell. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. On business, we discussed the Chromebook policy a little earlier, what we're trying to do with that and solar panels, we took care of. Public comment? All right. Moving on, public relations. President Vecchia?
I just want to shout out to the Winthrop High School drama for just an outstanding production of Chicago. And rumor has it that the Winthrop Middle School's production of Beauty and the Beast, tickets are going on sale today and that's for December 14th, 15th, and 16th.
Yeah, I was going to mention the same thing. Chicago was terrific and I look forward to Beauty and the Beast, too.
Good luck to the Vikings on Thursday morning. Hope we have plenty of support there. Back 'em up.
Ditto.
Exact same thing as President Vecia, for me and Brian. Mrs. Swope.
It's an away game. On December 5th, Blackstrap and For Kids Only are getting together to have a coat drive for local students. So, if anybody can support them, that's at 7 to 9 and all the coats will be donated to our students.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Matucci, seconded by Ms. Swope. All in favor?